Mayor, we're about to convene. Are you there?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, everyone will come to order. It's a few minutes past seven o'clock. Welcome to the City of North Pole. It's our council meeting at September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's a regular meeting. This is Mayor Pro Tem Santa Claus standing in for Mayor Church. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
For the meeting of September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, Mr. Schuster?
President.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson has an excused absence. Mr. Williams?
You.
Mr. Claus?
Here.
Or Mayor Pro Tem Claus. And Mayor Church?
Yes.
And we'll go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance being led by our city clerk, Emily.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
A nation will be given by Benny.
Well, soften our minds, soften our hearts. Always, always.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Please be seated. I hear a motion to approve the agenda.
We end.
Move to approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And do I hear a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes. Move to amend the agenda?
I hear a motion to consent.
Yep. So the amendment would be to consent in twelve. New business, A, request the council general code codification contract, B, request the council recommendation for new vehicle purchase for utilities, and new business, I am C, request the council acceptance of Jag Grant.
I'll second that. Thank you.
And do I also hear a motion to strike eleven AA, the second A? An unfinished business.
Yeah, I will go ahead and I will make that motion as well to strike eleven AA.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So it's totally changing the agenda. So you can make those amendments in total. So it would be striking eleven AA.
Yep.
Uh, striking eleven AA and then the three new business items. And then you can, in the same motion, you can strike fourteen if.
I'll just do the strike eleven AA and then the consent new item of business, twelve A, B, and C, myself.
Second that.
And I would add to that, strike the item fourteen, executive session.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay. Did you get four?
Who's second? That was the second to the amendment.
So since we're approving one item, it's the agenda. My, what I, what I'm understanding is that we're striking eleven AA, the proposed substitute, consenting twelve A, B, and C on the new business and striking, because this is all one motion, it's all one item on the agenda, we're, and then striking fourteen, executive session. Am I understanding that motion correctly?
That's true, under two motions, but yes.
So if we're, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do it one at a time, I need to do, I'd have, I'd have to take a roll call on your first amendment and take a roll call on the second. I.
Think we could wrap it up into one.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, so, and firsted by Anton Keller, seconded by Santa Claus. I'm understanding, to understand correctly and clarify for the record, we're doing, we're striking eleven AA, the proposed substitute, consent agenda under new business item A, B, and C, and striking item fourteen, executive session from this agenda. Am I, is that my understanding?
He. Was it you that seconded Santa? Okay, yes. That is correct, Mrs. Mayor. Or if Mrs. Clerk.
If I may through the chair.
Please go ahead.
Since I wasn't let into the pre committee of the whole, I have some questions about item twelve A. I would like to move to discuss that.
Do I hear a second? That move fails.
We would vote on that, correct?
I didn't hear a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, so, Mr. Keller, back to Mr. Keller's motion. Mr. Keller's motion is to strike from the agenda eleven AA on new business, move to the consent agenda twelve A and C? Or you, you.
A, B, and C.
You wanted to do A, B, and C. And then fourteen, executive session is striking. And then Mayor Church, firsted by Mayor Church, and who's Jordan seconding? Okay, so on the motion to continue, item twelve B on the agenda. Mr. Claus?
Uh, Ms. Clerk. Yeah, he, Mr., Mayor is asking for twelve A to be placed back on to the agenda. That's.
Twelve A?
That is correct.
I misunderstood. Okay, so item, moving to item twelve A will remain on the agenda. Firsted by Mayor Church, seconded by Jordan, uh, Jordan Schuster. Mr. Claus?
No.
Mr. Williams?
Oh, putting twelve A back on, huh? All right, yes.
Mr. Brandt?
No.
Mr. Keller?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Church?
Yes.
Okay, we will keep item twelve A on the agenda. And on the agenda, as we clarified, Mr. Keller and Mr. Uh, Mr. Claus's. Mr. Williams? Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt? Mayor Church?
Yes.
And on the agenda for this evening, as amended, Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
And Mayor Church?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We're moving over to number five, approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the August eighteenth regular city council meeting minutes?
If so.
I'll second.
Thank you.
On the, uh, sorry, Mr. Claus, Mayor Pro Tem, would you like me to call the roll on that?
Yes, please.
On the minutes of the August eighteenth regular council meeting, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
And Mayor Church?
No.
Okay, those minutes pass five to one.
And may I hear a motion to approve the minutes for September second, two thousand and twenty-five, regular city council meeting, please?
Would anybody like to approve the minutes of the September second, two thousand and twenty-five, regular city council meeting?
I move to approve the minutes of September second, regular city council meeting.
I'll second, Mr. Keller.
Please call the roll.
On the minutes from the September second regular council meeting, Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mayor Church?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we're down to council member questions of the Mayor Pro Tem in this case. And I just have an announcement that I'm sure Mayor Church would also make. For those of you who are available at five thirty tomorrow at the Terry Miller Park, there's going to be a celebration, a dedication to the bench, to the Nikki Snow bench. Um, she was a major proponent for the PTA and an Air Force veteran, and also a major proponent for the Girl Scouts. So um, for those of you who would like to attend, who knew her and loved her, please come up to Terry Miller Park tomorrow at five thirty PM. Thank you. That concludes my comments. Council member questions of the mayor will have to pass till Mayor Church gets back to town unless you have a question for me as Mayor Pro Tem. The nun will move to citizens' comments and Madam Clerk?
Uh, any, any person wishing to speak to any item not on the agenda needs to sign up to the, on the list located on the public testimony table. Respectful standards of decorum and courtesy should be observed by all speakers. Remarks should be directed to the city council as a body rather than any particular council member or staff. Comments are listed limited to five minutes. I've had nobody sign up online. Is there anybody in council chambers that would like to publicly testify this evening?
Please come forward.
My name is Jeannie Olson. I live on Hollowell Road. I'd like to speak tonight about, I think you have the hand out there, about kind of a disturbing thing that's happened in our community. I'm gonna give you the backstory. On Labor Day night, I saw this post on my phone. It said, "I also want to share that someone in a different chat posted this message about finding fascist stickers on the North Pole Nature Trail. Sorry to report, but the white supremacist neo-Nazi sticker stuff that was happening in Anchorage has apparently started in North Pole as well. Just found and pulled this off the bridge on the nature trail at eleven forty-three today, which was Sunday. Be on the lookout." You don't have those pictures, but they were actually on, just the walking, the posts. And, but then what they said, um, if someone else has a stepladder and is willing to get them down, that would be mighty neighborly of you. I don't want people having to see this stuff. Basically, they said, "Someone posted a bunch of other white supremacy stickers up high on one of the signposts on the Beaver Springs Nature Trail. I'd like to get them down too, but I don't have the tools handy to climb up and reach them." So I wrote back about nine o'clock that night. It was pouring down rain. And I said, "I'll go over in the morn," it was dark already. And I said, "I'll go over in the morning and get them down." So I came over here, um, and it was Tuesday, and there was, I looked around at all the kiosks. I couldn't find them, but I did stick a ladder in my truck. So I started walking back and I kept walking. And I thought, man, it can't be that back kiosk way back there. Surely it's not. But it was. But I had a fiberglass ladder and it was light. So those are the pictures that you have of those white supremacy stickers. I climbed up there and then I had a razor blade and I, I cut them down. And so basically what I think, and I understand you've got an email too, that gives you a link to an article that was written. And, and I went home and I looked up the stickers and what they meant. And I thought, oh, this is not good. But when I got the link and I read the link about the article about them and how this evolves, it became pretty disturbing. And, and in my, in my true sense, I appreciate that democracy allows, and First Amendment allows freedom of speech. But there is no room in our country for this type of hatred. Absolutely. So I'd like you to make some kind of a declaration, you know, just declaring this is not acceptable in our community. I don't want our community to become a national news item. And this is where it starts. I can remember when I was a kid, and you can probably think back, before you were in school even, like you were three or four. I grew up in Arlington, Virginia. I was born there. My dad was in the army. We moved back to Iowa shortly after I was four. But I remember certain things, and you probably remember certain things about your childhood too. But one of the things in Arlington, Virginia, back in the fifties, was as we were going up this road, this main arterial, there was this spotlight that shone on a swastika on a building. A red swastika. I still remember that. That was just a few of the things that I remember from my childhood in Washington, DC. But it was never taken down because First Amendment. And I get it. But on the other hand, we've got to send messages out, and that's what I plead for you to do, is make, somehow make aware. And, and I don't know, you know, that, that kiosk back there is kind of close to the schools. It was probably a kid that was able to shimmy up that kiosk. The rest of us have to use a ladder. But still, they were up there. And people are now vigilant about looking for these stickers on nature trails. But they can be on bench stops, signposts, streetlights. And so we just need to keep looking for them, I think. And maybe reach out to the schools, explain, this is not okay. This is not okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions?
I, I do have one. I, I saw the same post that you referenced, and then I would just, where, where did you find it exactly? Because I, I went out looking after I saw that post too, and.
Oh, yeah, I wrote it down. Um, so the, well, you saw the picture. There's the picture of the kiosk with the owl, the nature owl.
Yep.
It's that kiosk. And that's, that's the only one that had him way up there on the top underneath the roof.
Okay.
So that's like, very back, the last kiosk, the very last kiosk.
First of all, I want to thank you for dragging a ladder that's probably taller than you all the way down that trail to take care of this by yourself. In the future, if, if you do hear about this, just contact, uh, Tim, our Glidden, our Director of City Services, and he'll have one of the Public Works guys take care of it. But, you know, I walk this trail every single day with my dogs, and I, I never saw these, and I wouldn't have noticed it, uh, because these were on the underside of the the kiosk on the roof on the kiosk there. I didn't notice it because I don't stop to look at those, but our visitors to our city do, and they probably would have seen them up there. When you first brought this to my attention, I looked at these stickers and they looked pretty innocuous. I mean, the one with the moose on it just looks like a hunting group or an outdoors group or something like that. Until I looked up what what that, I, I'm not even gonna say the name of the group, but I looked up what that group is. And it is pretty disturbing. So they're being subtle with these stickers, but I, I agree with you. There's no place in our community for this.
Yeah, I think everyone, please read that article. That will give you incredible insight. I'd had no idea, absolutely no idea. And it was probably, like I said, maybe a junior high or a high school kid. But, you know, they're passionate about it. They ordered those stickers online. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my name is Sandra Roth, and I just wanted to kind of give a kudos to our police department. Officer, City Officer Illingworth showed all the kids from Summit Christian Academy. They all, all the classes came in and got a tour of the police station today and got to walk all the way through the police station and see all the different areas and explore the cars. They turned the lights on for them and everything. Uh, and they just had an absolute blast learning about what they do here and seeing them. Uh, and when the kids, uh, they walked from the school and then ended up walking back. On their walk back to school, uh, they passed Officer Dykman, who had also helped them during the tour, and they all waved at him. And he took the time to kind of pay attention to them as well, although he was out actively trying to help a citizen. So I just want to say thanks to our, uh, police department for showing the kids around. They just had an absolute blast. They thought it was the best thing ever.
Thank you. Other public comments? What up? Hi.
Hi, uh, my name's Cody Peters, um, and I live on Parkway in North Pole. And, um, really not gonna take up much time. I just, uh, wanted to, you know, as a secondary community voice, say that I agree with what Jeannie had to say up here and wanted to just give so, an extra level of support to that. Um, I really don't think that, um, you know, that messaging belongs in our community. And then on top of that, I think that it's really important that the authorities in our community, being the city council, like, makes a message clear to the public that, that it doesn't belong, so.
Thank you. Questions? No, we're good. Thank you very much, Cody.
It's nice to see you again, Cody.
All right, now we're coming up to communications from department heads. And Madam CFO, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. I put some confidential information up on your dais and also the latest on the sales tax and interest, um, income. Uh, if you have any questions about that, you can certainly reach me. And also, we've started going over budgets this last week. And so we, and the department heads have already got their budgets put together. And we're just gonna wrap that up this week and maybe next week, sit with the mayor. And so that's, that process, I'll say that, all that process has started. Uh, Michelle was working on the bank's, uh, rec today, and she didn't quite get that done. So as soon as she's done with that, I'll send out financials. I'll have Emily send them out. And that's all I have today.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Director of City Services, you're up.
How's it going?
Good, thank you.
So for utilities, for the water main replacement project, phase one, the, the last step, last step to get a hundred percent stamped drawings is to determine where the water mains cross under the railroad tracks. Um, and we just got the, the estimate from Respec. It's gonna be just over twenty-three thousand dollars to dig it up and find those. So I'm gonna be bringing that potentially to you guys to, to get, get it approved, but not, not today. Just, just an update that it's happening. Um, we have, uh, a roofing contractor repairing some damage on the old water treatment plant. So you might see some people up on the, uh, what looks like an old abandoned building. They're just fixing some of the water leaks, and they cut in a new drain last week to, to help remove some of the water, um, that just hangs out up there. We had a resident request a utility bill appeal. I'll, I'll give you that information, you know, when it's not public record. But, uh, um, I did approve it. And I'll give you everything in my update tomorrow. Uh, thank you for approving the, the vehicle for utilities. They really need it. Uh, the building Department for Event Permits, the, the North Pole High School Homecoming Parade was last week. It, uh, it went well. Saw the police department out there throwing cones and stopping traffic. I ended up being the first person in the roundabout to get the cone. So I got to watch the whole parade go through the roundabout. Pretty fantastic. So I got a video. I don't know if anybody wants to see the parade. Uh, and then as, uh, Mayor Pro Temp, Santa Claus said, uh, tomorrow at five thirty at the Terry Miller Memorial Park, Public Works is gonna be installing a bench. Um, and the Girl Scout troop is gonna be there, uh, and the surviving family is gonna be there, the children and the, the husband. So if you guys want to come check out the bench, it looks pretty cool. So Public Works, we're going to be, uh, bringing forward, uh, the two thousand and twenty-six snow removal contract renewal. We've got, uh, one year left on our current contract. So we have the option to renew it. I'm gonna, I just got that today. So I'll write that up and bring it to you guys. Probably not this one, obviously. Uh, the stormwater drain project, uh, we got some updated estimates, and obviously prices have gone up since two thousand and twenty-two. So that's gonna be an issue. Um, but I'll get that figured out and bring it to you guys. Um, and then I've had two citizens, uh, bringing up concerns about the West First Street intersection where it hooks up with, uh, Homestead. And, uh, they're having concerns that the traffic is multiplying with the more houses that are coming in on that other end. And they, they're worried about, uh, the safety of the children. Um, so I don't know what the plan is, but, uh, I just thought I'd let you guys know that, that there are citizens worried about it. We've got multiple unit homes going in out there. And so it's, it seems like it's only gonna get worse.
Questions? Please go ahead.
Uh, uh, just an observation. I was talking to someone else, uh, concerning the development that's gonna be happening just on the other side of Homestead. And apparently there's gonna be a multifamily unit facility put there, uh, exactly where the location was with the land that the city almost purchased a couple of years ago with Ada. So my immediate thought was, we need to make sure our infrastructure is ready. Uh, and, uh, I, being in then, in the Ford subdivision, First Avenue has definitely gotten busier. And I know that it gets busy during lunchtime with the high school, and also when school gets out with high school. So um, right on for you for thinking ahead with, okay, what are some of the proactiveness that we need to do to make that intersection or that whole street Homestead ready for what's coming?
Right.
So, thank you.
Tim, with that, um, roofing, uh, structure being, uh, that contractor on the roofing, are we following all the rules with that individual, making sure they got all the right insurance and all like that?
Yes, yes, we are.
Because I hate to see somebody get up there and fall or hurt themselves or something like that.
Right.
Okay.
Well, we, we.
That's important.
All right, they, they've, uh, they've got a, the business license, and, uh, they've gone through the whole process with the city to, uh, to contract with us, yep.
Right.
Thank you.
Um, I just was curious if you had an update. I know a while back you were getting estimates on the damage to Beaver Springs.
Right.
That, do we go anywhere with that? Did that?
Uh, before I went on my trip, um, I gave all my information to the police chief to see if they could contact him. And then, uh, Mayor Church, um, and I went and talked to them. Um, but that's, I haven't heard from either. But as soon as I got back, they've both been gone. So we haven't had a chance to talk. So I don't know what's happened.
What was the estimate range?
Uh, I want to say it was about thirty thousand.
Thanks.
I was gonna ask the same thing, actually, but I was gonna ask the police chief that. The other thing, while, while you were gone, um, Cody and his team expanded that lagoon down there on, on First and Homestead over there. The other thing, while you were gone, Cody and his team expanded that lagoon down there on, on First and Homestead over there.
Right.
So I don't know if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, so the, the bulk of the money for the stormwater drainage project is to improve the size of the lagoon that we have over there. And because we're not going to be able to do it this summer, the Public Works is, has done what they can with the equipment that we own to, to double the size of the lagoon for next year's breakup, just to, to help a little bit more before hopefully we can get this stormwater project going next summer to, to make a bigger difference in the flooding over in that area.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? No? All right, up next, Fire Chief.
Now, thank you for the opportunity. I don't have much to report. We had completed the apprentice academy for this summer on August 29th. And I'm sure Chief mentioned something about it, but it, there's a delay in getting scores back from the state on the certification training. So the five people that participated, two were volunteers similar to last year. And the other three were our paid apprentices. All of them passed with flying colors. Kudos to them and to the duty crew who handled the bulk of the instruction. Because of the nature of the certifying officer role, had to be either chief or myself. So we couldn't participate in the instruction and then turn around and certify our own class. That's kind of against the rules. So the burden really fell on the, on the folks that are, you know, staffing the station and they did a fantastic job. Very happy with it all. And now we'll move into the next phases. But the apprentice program that you folks have chosen to support and fund is paying dividends. Those people are getting hired. They're on our part-time or payroll, the ones that have completed it. It's, the program's a success. So we thank you for that.
Great, thank you. Questions?
I just have one. Have you guys got anything back from your ISO?
Not yet.
Okay.
She had some follow-up questions and asked for some more reports to be submitted that I dug through the last year and sent in. But we haven't heard anything yet. And usually with ISO, no, this is good news.
Next up, our police chief.
And I don't have a big report either. I just got back from a short trip. Was very thankful for the competence of my lieutenant and holding down the fort while we were, while I was gone. It seems that everything went very well. One thing, I did just finish up interviews with our prospective candidates for police officer today. So I should have a decision on who we're moving forward with this week. The academy starts October 6th, so we're kind of in a rush to totally get that figured out. To answer the question that was posed about the property over here. So the conclusion that we've kind of come to is not unsurprising, but the actual individual that did the damage is no longer in the area and the person that owns the property doesn't really know exactly who they are or their full name or, you know, that, that type of thing. So it's possible that individual was undocumented or something else like that. And, but bottom line, we're probably not going to be able to track down the person that actually did the damage. And that being the case, there's not going to be criminal charges against the property owner. That would be an entirely civil, civil matter. So from the police department's perspective, it's essentially a, what's called an open inactive case. If more information arises or we're able to actually track down who that person is, they come back, could potentially reopen it.
Any questions? No? And now our city clerk.
Thank you. I want to remind everybody that Election Day is coming up, October 7th. We will have the polls here at City Hall, 125 Snowman Lane. They'll be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We also will have early voting starting September 22nd from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And that'll be September 22nd through, Monday, September 22nd through October 6th. Eight to five, Monday through Friday, early voting here. I hope to see everybody stop in and get one of Jed's daughter's stickers.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our city clerk? Nope, thank you. So ongoing projects report, I think I'll leave that up to Mayor Church when he returns. He can fill everybody in. And up next is unfinished business, business, item 11A. That's ordinance 2025-09. Would anyone like to move and introduce?
Move to introduce and adopt ordinance 2025-09, an ordinance of the city of North Pole amending Title IX of the North Pole Municipal Code to add a new chapter prohibiting solicitation from the occupants of vehicles.
Is a second for Mayor Church?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up is citizens' comments, correct? Right?
Staff report. There's a staff report on it.
Is there a staff report?
For that, two previous meetings.
Chief? Want to consider it covered?
I do.
All right, thank you. All right.
And I've had nobody sign up online. Would anybody in the audience like to testify to this ordinance?
Right.
That leads us to council discussion.
Right.
I move to strike the exemptions A and B.
Here a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I'm not in favor of this ordinance at all for all the reasons I've said at the previous two meetings and the workshop. But if we are going to go forth with it, I, neither one of these exemptions make sense. And I think they just need to go away. The ordinance itself is, is pretty straightforward. So I don't think we need either one of these exemptions.
Other discussion? Oh, chief.
Did you want to lower the fine in the same motion?
That has to be in a different.
Okay.
Discussion. Discussion. All right, is there a second?
Call the question?
Call the question. Thank you.
On the motion to amend by striking exemptions A and B, Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
And Mayor Church?
No.
That motion passes five to one.
Thank you. The other, oh.
I move to lower the penalties on, I don't have my glasses, I'm sorry, line 60. I'm not sure exactly where, I think, let's start at $50. So I moved to lower the fine to $50.
Second.
Yep.
So, you know, we, we discussed this in the work session. And I think everybody agrees $500 is a successive. I think $50, hopefully it will never come to even a citation. But if it does, a $50 fine should be sufficient. I will say that Ms. Rolf sent me the Alaska Statute 28.05.099A, which allows for the court to waive the fine if a donation is made to the specific emergency medical service entity serving the area where the violation occurred. So that's, goes to what Chief Smith was talking about. You know, maybe having them give the option of donating the, the fine to. In this case, it would be, I guess it would be the fire department in this case. I don't, I don't know if we want to discuss that. I, I think just lowering the fine to $50 is sufficient.
Does it need to be in the ordinance if that's?
If there is a dollar amount, yes, because then it needs to be in the code.
The donation aspect.
Oh, the donation aspect.
Yes.
Last thing. Chief?
Respectfully, I would prefer on behalf of the department that we don't have donations come to the department. Having worked in departments that handled the seatbelt donations that this is similar to, it, it's problematic. It's kind of a headache for the people that are receiving the money. So.
For clerical reasons or?
Yeah, yeah, we're firemen.
Okay.
You know, just to keep it real simple, I, I.
Yeah, no, thank you.
That makes sense.
It, it would make sense with all the fiscal notes that hopefully we never see. Okay.
So I just want to clarify, on line, on line 60, it would be to, firsted by Brant, seconded by Williams. It would be to drop the fee from 500 to 50. Okay. Sure. And on that motion, Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Pro temp Claus?
Yes.
And Mayor Church?
Abstain.
Was that abstain?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passed five to one abstention.
Thank you. Next up, we have new business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Are there any other exemptions to, or excuse me, amendments to this ordinance? If not, we would need to vote on the ordinance.
Thank you.
Or discussion, yes.
Real quick, I think this is pretty fair. We've spent quite a few weeks on this and I think this is a good step forward.
I agree.
I'll second.
So on 25, ordinance 2509, it was motioned to adopt by Mr. Keller and it was seconded by Mayor Church. Would you like me to call the roll, Mayor Pro temp?
Yes, please.
And on this ordinance 2509, Mr. Brant?
No.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mayor Church?
Yes.
And that motion passed five to one.
Right, now I believe we're up to number 12.
The motion to change the agenda was three to three and we don't have a tiebreaker. So the motion to approve the agenda as consented was advanced. So that brings us to council comments if.
Thank you. Council comments.
First, we have Mr. Keller.
Real quick, could I, could I, could you re, reconfirm that vote that we had on the amendment for 12A?
Yeah, out of an abundance of caution, Maggie and I are both keeping rosters tonight.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. We both, we both had three yeses and three nos. Normally, Mr. Jacobson or Mayor Church would be here to have a four to three, but we have a tie. So.
Inadvertently, it's, it's a vote down.
It's a motion failed.
Motion failed. Okay, all right. All right, in that light, yeah, I can go ahead and do comments first. This last week has been filled with quite turmoil within the world and within our nation. And I want to make sure that everybody noticed that violence is not the best answer. Whether it's on a person, a family, an individual or a collection of people. If anything, this points to that we need to have more conversations, more civil conversations. So that's, that's all I'm going to say about that. I want to give kudos to the fire department for continuing to shine with the fire apprenticeship. Like you guys are doing phenomenal work. So, and I, I understand that you guys don't like pats on the back because you bring it back to us council members for us supporting this for the last two years, three years actually, because it took a little bit to get it going. But your staff and the leadership that you and Chief Feineken have been putting forth and those that are actually doing the program, that's awesome. So thank you. Thank you for, for being there. The, the voting season is coming. Please go, come out and vote. There's a lot of seats available here in North Pole. There's seats available, open for the borough. Come let your voices be known. This is an opportunity for us to share what we think is best for our communities. So, yeah, fall's coming. Actually, it is passing through. I'm excited for change. I think I say that almost every other meeting because it's something different, right? But I, I am. I'm, I'm excited for change to see what happens. I'm ready to see improvement with dialogues across this nation, across the world. So, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Mr. Williams?
I would like to say ditto off of what he said. But you know, I went to the parade the other day and I was the vehicle in the back with the yellow lights on. I thought about the individuals in, I think it was New York where this knucklehead, oh, should I say knucklehead? But anyway, this individual drove down and hurt a lot of people. So seeing that vehicle there, you know, that was enough to, to keep somebody from doing that. And the football game I hear this, what, Friday, past Friday, it was awesome. I couldn't stay because I had another thing that I had to get involved with. And the world today, the only way we're going to change things is to talk to each other. I didn't know about these, the, the stickers that some individual put on the, on the plaque out there, but I'll be looking for those type of things when I walk through places and like that. And I'll check that out. Of course, if I get locked up for somebody cracking on me for taking the stickers off, somebody's going to have to bail me out. Outside of that, we just got to work together, guys. Everything we do, treat people the way you want to be treated, you know? What's the word? Don't turn around and browbeat individuals. We got a lot of that going on, a lot. Browbeating, not good. You know, we, we are small, so we should be able to handle everything ourselves. Okay? And we need to work together as a, I always say team, because there's no I in team. We have to remember that. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Schuster?
I had, this was going to go in questions of the mayor, but I just kind of wanted to make the council aware. I was reviewing my electric bill and I've been getting charged sales tax since July on my electric bill. So I just, I don't know if notice, I'm, I'm sure notice was sent, but it'll be a bill credit for me. But just make sure, you know, keep an eye on your electric bill and make sure you're still not being charged a sale tax. Then, yeah, to echo Councilman Keller's comments, last week was, you know, really tough for us, for everybody as a nation. And you just, my prayers go out to everyone that is dealing with tragedy across the country right now. It's, violence is never the answer and, and it was really sad to see the state of America. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Mr. Brant?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brant. Mayor Pro temp Claus?
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pro temp Williams and I had the great pleasure of doing the excellent coin toss for the homecoming team out on the football field. We had a great time. The team did really well. And I want to thank Mayor Church for temporarily investing in me, the authority of Mayor Pro temp. I appreciate it. And I particularly want to thank our city clerk, Emily, for shepherding along the way here. In my role here as Mayor Pro temp in our council meeting. And also I encourage you all to vote, vote, vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro temp Claus. Mayor Church?
Nothing for me. I'd just like to say thank you to Councilman Claus and Keller for. taking care of the mayor's bowl at North Pole High School and, and for holding down the fort while I've been on vacation.
Thank you, Mayor Church. And that brings us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No adjourn.
I'll second.
I have, thank you.
Where adjourn?
We are adjourned at 7:52. Thank you.
I like that.